Yeah, I think you want that item sent. Did you guys look at those? Were they okay?
Yep.
Or just shorten it?
Mention it.
Good evening. Should have given you a little more warning, but gonna call together the, uh, the, uh, this meeting of the, uh, the Farmington area school board. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, we've got a pretty good agenda this, or we've got a lot of good items on the agenda before we get to approval of the agenda. Uh, we have the swearing in of our new board member, Sue Dentinger.
Which, which may be the best part of the agenda.
It could be the best part.
So.
Or not.
Well, time will tell. Sue, would you stand up, please, and then raise your right hand? This is fairly formal. Uh, and then all you have to do is end by affirming this, so you don't have to repeat this. So, do you affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota, and that you will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district 192 to the best of your judgment and your ability?
I will.
Congratulations and welcome to the Farmington Public School Board.
Well, I think we get that in closing remarks, right? All right, so the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Uh, there's a, a pretty lengthy agenda made up of some policy items, a number of other items that require administrative action. I think all of us have had a chance to, uh, take a look. Are there any items that anyone needs to discuss, or any items that need to be added to the agenda? If not, uh, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Simmons, second by Doyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. So, our next item is the superintendent update. Jason, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Christensen. I, I don't think we can go much farther with acknowledging the fact that there is a balloon behind you for a very special reason. It is Chair Christensen's birthday today, so we are very happy to celebrate your birthday with you at our meeting.
This is my present.
We are happy that you are, that you are sharing your present with us, so thank you very much. Just a, well, actually a fairly, you know, we, we haven't been together since, and done a superintendent update since the second week of May, and a ton has transpired, and there's been a lot going on, and so this is fairly focused on, um, some updates on, uh, some of the different things that we have going on. Um, and Kennedy's gonna bounce around and do, add a couple of things as well. So I did wanna give a brief update on our summer programming. Uh, it started, um, right after the school year was out, so we, we take about a week off in the district, and then we transition into all sorts of different opportunities for our kids, whether it's through, um, our elementary star program, our middle school Tiger Academy, our FHS, um, credit recovery, and then community education has a litany of things that are going on this year. But it's just, it, it's pretty interesting and amazing to see the number of kids that come back into our district once school is out, 'cause sometimes we think it's over, but actually, a lot of times our buildings, whether they're district, um, activities or outside organizations using our building, we're just as busy as, as the summer goes on. So, this year right now, we have about 160, um, high schoolers, um, engaged in our, our credit recovery activities. Uh, there's about 75 Miller schoolers, um, enrolled in Tiger Academy, um, and Kenny's gonna talk a little bit more about the specifics at, at one of our, our sites, but we have about 350 elementary kids in the star program, um, over the summer. And then, you may remember, I don't know if we shared this public, publicly, but in Friday notes, that we did get some, um, federal funding dollars for enrichment over the summer that only had to be, to, to be spent. And Community Ed spent a great deal of time with our staff designing all sorts of different opportunities, really based on, um, kids' interest and staff interest, and we have about 420 kids involved in, in those programs that are, they're running now through the end of the summer, some, some really cool opportunities. And then, you know, typically, we do a state tournament update, um, at the end of each, um, winter season, and, um, and, and actually each season, that involves all of our activities. And our spring had a super successful, um, year, and so I'm just gonna kinda run down the list of our place winners and things like that. So, the, we have a couple of, of state champions, and the first one is the Burnsville Farmington Lakeville Blazing Cats. Uh, they were the CI Adaptive Softball State Champs, and not only did they win the state championship, they, they basically crushed everybody to that championship. They default, they defeated their three opponents by a combined score of 41 to 6 at that state tournament. And this is their second state championship since 2019, and third since they co-opted. Um, our baseball team, another successful season. You may remember last year that they were the Class 4A champion, and they followed that up with a runner-up this year. They defeated Park of Cottage Grove, who they actually faced in the state championship game last year. Wasn't quite the offensive battle that it was in the championship game last year. We defeated them 3 to 2. Then we defeated Maple Grove, um, 7 to 5, and that was on the, um, on heels of a grand slam home run. I think it was in the sixth inning to put them up. Um, and then they got into the, um, the finals against Stillwater and lost 8 to 1. So if you think about it, state championship and then a runner-up, that's, that's, that's a pretty impressive two-year run for a group of kids. Uh, boys lacrosse, um, had an awesome end of their season. They actually qualified for the state tournament as well. Uh, they lost to Prior Lake, nine, or 10 to 19, and Prior Lake actually lost in the state championship game to, I think, Benil St. Margaret. So, tough matchup in their first round, did a good job competing with them. They came back the next round and lost to Chanhas in 9 to 11 in the consolation bracket. And then another really cool part of that is Mitch Grings, the, the boys head coach for lacrosse, was named the state boys lacrosse coach of the year. So a really cool honor for Mitch. Um, you know, he's one of our own. He graduated from Farmington, played lacrosse, so it's cool when your coaches do that, but then when they come up through our programs and give back, that's even awesomer, if that's even a word. Our boys volleyball team, even though it's still not a Minnesota State High School League sanctioned, um, uh, you know, sport, they still do, through their association, have a state tournament. Our boys qualified for that. Um, they lost to Southwest Christian in the first round, um, two games to three, so they lost in kinda that, where they played a 15 in the last one, so super competitive. And then, then they lost in the next round to Lakeville South. Our boys golf team sent one person to the state tournament, Kyler Schwam. He finished tied for 10th. Our girls golf team, and we're still, we're still trying to dig into this, I, I think it's the first time we've sent an individual from our girls golf team to the state tournament. Um, I guess you can quote me on it, 'cause I said it, but it might not be accurate, but I think it's accurate. Um, Aspen Ball finished 49th, so really cool, um, opportunity for her in that program. Boys track and field, the 4x200 of Jonathan Schrum, Raimi Ayub, Rod Finley, and Jacob Cocarelli finished 8th. Um, and then Raimi Ayub, um, did awesome in his two individual events. He, he finished first in the 400 meters, where he set the school record, the meet record, and the state record. So, you gotta be moving to do that. Unfortunately, he only had 35 minutes to recover from that 400, came back and competed in the 800, and finished in fourth place. And the note that I got from the AD and the coach as well, he should have been the champ in the, the 4, the 800 as well, so we can, we can give him that. But, pretty impressive on that front. And then the girls track and field team, the 4x800, Ava Sullivan, Mariah Fenske, Emily, Emily Reed, and Lauren Lansing finished 9th. 1600 meter race, Sophia Venning finished 13th. Uh, the 800 meter, Lauren Lansing finished 9th. Um, 200 meter, Mariana Scott finished 9th. The 4x400 meter, Ava Sullivan, Lauren Lansing, Vanessa Agaman, and Mariana Scott finished 8th. And then we had a pole vaulter, Izzy Anderson finished 15th. So, um, quite a, a, a state tournament run for, um, our, and these are just the ones that placed for it. So, it was a, a good, good follow-up to the end of the year. Uh, Kennedy's gonna talk a little bit more about due days, but that was this past weekend, and what I can tell you is this, is our activities and programs were well represented at, at Mountain Due Days. And then, the last thing, um, I just, I, I, I want, we don't typically, um, go into great depth around consent agenda, but one of the people that are in consent agenda is, um, our recommendation for our new hire at Bachman Middle School, Joe Sage. So we were really excited to, um, have him become part of our team. So, Joe's taught middle school, middle school-aged learners, served as a digital learning coach, served as a dean, assistant principal, and then, uh, prior to this, was currently a principal at a middle school. So, we feel really good about that opportunity, um, and had him to our team. So, uh, Chair Christensen, that is what I have for my good news and my updates.
Very good. Kennedy?
All right. Hi, everyone. This summer's been off to a really great start with some of the Farmington programs. Kids around the elementary age group level are welcome to participate in Kid Connection, a program where these kids can spend their day under the supervision of some trusted advisors, and some peers. It's great, it's a great way to get the kids out of the house and make some new friends. They recently had a Wheels Day, which was a lot of fun, and they were able to bring their, um, bikes and scooters for the day, so that was fun to see. Community Ed, um, has tons of classes this summer that would be awesome for you guys to check out. For example, there are things like swim lessons and a bunch of open swim time at the Dodge Middle School pool. If you're looking for something to do this summer, or something new to try, or already have a passion, check out Community Ed, there's probably something for you. They have tons of amazing programs. At River View right now, there's something called the Star Program, which Mr. Berg touched upon a little bit. Um, it has kids come in Monday through Thursday for a few weeks at the beginning of summer and a few weeks at the end of summer to practice their learning. They're able to work on skills like literacy and math, as well as having an activity relating to a weekly theme. The current theme for this week is "Out of This World." I was able to spend a day at the program last week, and it was so cool to see how these elementary school learners were working with teachers from all across the district and with each other. And finally, as many of us know, Farmington recently had the Due Days Parade. Farmington has some groups from the high school come represent the school, um, such as the Farmington Choir, the band, the color guard, and many more. I've heard many great things from them. They ran out of candy at, I think, their first block, so they were super excited to pass all that out, and I heard the kids loved it, so that was awesome to see. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Uh, the consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted on with one motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the consent agenda, and it will be acted upon separately. Does anybody have an item they would wish to discuss? Seeing none, can I get a motion to pass the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda is passed. Moving on to reports and communications, uh, the board, that's actually two items for me. Um, the board committee assignments, uh, were made in January when we reconstituted the new board. Since then, uh, one of our members has left, and we've appointed a, a new board member, which provides an opportunity to replace a couple different positions. Um, I'm appointing, uh, Sue Dentinger to both the policy committee and the community engagement committee, and I'm asking Rebecca Coletta also to join the community engagement committee, and Hannah Simmons will continue to also be a, a member of, of that group as well. Um, so I think that does fill in any empty spots within our, uh, with our board, uh, within our board committees. I don't know if there's any questions, I'll entertain them. I don't know what that means, whether I'll play, sell jokes or play spoons by entertaining them, but anyway, since there are no questions, we can move on to the next item. Sorry, dad joke. The next, the next item on the agenda, or on this group, is the appointment of the ISD 917, uh, school board representative. The ISD 917 school board, or, or, ISD 917 is a cooperative of most of the area, the southern, south suburban, uh, school districts, is that right, Jason?
Yeah, it, it includes Randolph is in there too, um, Hastings, um, a few others.
Right, so we, we pool resources. It's a way for these districts to pool some resources, to provide dedicated resources for special education and, uh, some other career development.
CTE and some different things, yep.
For, for students that we maybe would be challenged to provide on our own, right? So it's, it's, it's a, it's a really great district, and part of that representation is that each district has a member, uh, representative on the board. Melissa Saucer had sort of, does the ISD 192, uh, representative for, I don't know, eight years, uh, for quite a while, right? Um, and so when she left, that, that opened up an opportunity again to, uh, replace her. These are three-year terms, and the current term, I believe, ended at the end of this month, so we're actually starting a new term, so we haven't missed anything by, by her leaving in, in April or anything like that. Uh, I asked, uh, I guess I would just first wanna ask, are there board members who, I know there's at least one who is interested in, in taking the position, are there others?
I mean, I showed interest when Melissa left, 'cause nobody did at that time, so. I, I, so you're still, 'cause I know Melissa expressed interest, who wanted it, and nobody stepped up at that time.
Oh, I don't remember, we talked about it this year. I remember a couple of years ago I asked about it, and she wanted to continue at that time, so, so she continued, but I don't remember.
I remember we had a formal discussion as far as.
No, it wasn't a formal discussion, before she left, she sent stuff out.
Okay.
So I'm still interested, any, yeah?
Okay, so I, I guess what I wanted to do is, it would just kinda run this like we have, uh, actually for our, our officer, uh, positions. So we've got two nominees, right? Are you nominating yourself? Sorry, I'm speaking for you, because I've already had this conversation with you. Are you still interested?
I am.
Okay, so we have a nomination for, for Member Simmons and a, and a nomination for Member Carrero. Uh, are, are there any others, uh, who wanna be, who wanna consider this position? Okay, then, uh, I think the way we did this when we were choosing officers is, gave you each a few minutes to talk about your interests, and then I think we can just hold a vote. Is that fair?
Sure.
Let me start with, uh, Member Simmons.
Okay. So, thanks for letting me share my interest. Um, in the 917, as, the 917 representative, one of the things that interested me, both when I started in this role on our board, um, a year and a half ago, is a vast majority of my professional work has been done at the state and county level, working with early childhood systems and family support. And so, um, this is something that I would be really interested in bringing some of that background and knowledge into, um, as well as learning how it applies to our local contacts and our students that we're serving here. So, um, that's really what drives my interest, and I still have a couple of years left on my term, um, for this board, so I'd be able to, for sure, at least, continue for two of the three-year appointment, um, for this position.
Okay. Member Carrero?
I've always been interested, Melissa's always updated us on it, and she really had passion for it, so I kinda, at that time, left it alone, to be honest with you, 'cause she had true passion on it. Um, I would like to learn more about it, to be honest with you, to see what they do specifically, uh, of how we can kinda nurture and help each other between what we're, we're having here and what 917 does, so.
Does anyone, any of the board members have any questions for either Member Carrero or Member Simmons? All right, uh, so, all those in favor of, uh, Member Simmons becoming the ISD 192, uh, representative on the ISD 1917? I'm gonna mix up the numbers, I'm afraid of that.
Do we vote two? Steve and I? Do we vote two, or just?
I think you can vote two. I know I voted for myself when I, when I became chair.
Like, I do.
All in favor of Hannah, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That is actually a majority of four, with, uh, Coletta, myself, Hannah, Simmons, and, and Jaclyn. Do we need to have another vote, uh, for Simmons? Okay, so we'll, we'll point, uh, Member Simmons, uh, to the, to the position. And that ends the reports and communications. We've got a number of items under administrative action. Uh, first is the 10-year long, uh, the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan. Dan Miller, please.
Chair Christensen, can we take a motion for reports and communications?
Oh, sorry, you're right, I did mix up. Can I get a motion for, uh, acceptance of reports and communications?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Coletta. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, onto the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan. Thanks. There we go. Okay. All right. Uh, good evening, uh, Chair Christensen, members of the board, members of the community. Uh, just wanted to, uh, review a few things as it pertains to our 10-year long-term facilities maintenance, uh, budget application, uh, for the state. Uh, there are a number of documents that are, uh, in the, uh, agenda packet, I'm not gonna go through all of those. Uh, many of them are, are quite lengthy, uh, spreadsheets, and, uh, are somewhat redundant, and we've, uh, kinda gone through them previously. Uh, did wanna highlight a couple of items, though. Um, so first is, um, as you were just discussing, as it pertains to, uh, District 917, uh, which we, uh, which they are, we are a member of that cooperative. Uh, they do have authorization, uh, to request long-term facilities maintenance dollars. Um, it doesn't take from our allocation, it, uh, basically allows them to levy additional dollars, um, on those, uh, communities for which they serve. And so, what I've pulled up here is a spreadsheet that indicates, uh, what they have requested overall, um, for long-term facilities, uh, maintenance funding, and then I highlighted, uh, the line in there that, uh, pertains specifically to Farmington ISD 192. And as you can see there, um, their, their dollar value that they are asking for is, is relatively, uh, minimal, and in the area of about $19,000, uh, for FY 24. So, um, that, this would be something that would be included as part of that motion, uh, that we get to here in a little bit, that that would be included in, uh, in that. All right. Uh, this spreadsheet here, uh, is one of a couple of spreadsheets that we have to submit to the state. Um, this, uh, basically is kind of our expenditure plan. I'm not going to go through all of this, but if, if you take a look at it, uh, from left to right, it, uh, demonstrates or indicates, uh, 10 years, uh, worth of, uh, 10, 10-year time period, uh, that's there, as well as the, so, starting in the base of 2022, and then going forward, um, to 2032. Uh, the piece that I did wanna somewhat highlight, uh, or call your attention to, are the two highlighted lines, uh, the, uh, 10-year, uh, plan expenditures, and then as well as the ending fiscal year balance. Those, the expenditure piece, uh, is basically exactly what it sounds like, uh, what we would look to, uh, pay out, uh, of this particular fund over the course of those 10 years. Uh, some of the things get varied in here a little bit. Uh, there, if you kinda drill into it, you will see that there is levy as an aid, uh, which are the revenue side of things. And then the green line there that's highlighted is the fund balance. Uh, so if you take kinda the expenditures, the aid and levy components, which is the revenue side of it, uh, then the green line there would indicate, uh, basically your expenditures minus, uh, your, uh, revenues, and then end up with a, a fund balance that's there. You can see that over time, uh, with this, um, we are, we have kinda taken our fund balance in this particular fund down, uh, quite substantially, um, over the past couple of years, uh, with quite a number of projects that we have been working on. Uh, the goal would be to build this up a little bit, um, over time, so we have a little bit of a cushion that's there. So the goal is not to spend necessarily everything down, uh, every year, um, but to leave ourselves a little bit in reserve. Don't know if anyone has any questions. The, our funding, uh, seems, uh, is relatively, uh, consistent over time. Uh, there's a pretty lengthy formula that goes into determining the aid, uh, and levy components and what we are eligible for, that has to do with, uh, pupil, number of pupils, uh, age of buildings, all those sorts of things. Uh, so this is not something that really we control, uh, at all. It's kinda, this is what you get, like with most things in education, here's your formula, this is what you get. Uh, the only thing really that we do have some choice in, um, is choosing whether or not to, um, uh, levy the full amount, uh, that we are, um, eligible for. And when this particular, uh, mechanism started in about 2015, 16-ish, um, we did as a district, um, decide not to levy the entire amount, uh, but for the past number of years, we have elected to do so, uh, because, for lack of a better way of putting it, if, if we don't, we're just leaving money on the table. Um, that is, we think, in our district's, uh, and community's best interest to take that, especially considering that, uh, we do much better on the aid side of things and levy, so. And to be specific, when you say leaving money on the table, you're talking about matching funds from the state, not money that's in the, in the community? Correct. Yes. Yep, yep. So, um, we, we actually get, and this varies a little bit, but I believe we're in about the 53%-ish, um, aid versus levy, um, so we get more, um, in state aid than what we levy our taxpayers, so.
And Dan, and the green line, then, does that reflect, uh, the upward trend towards the fund balance that you'd be comfortable with, that growth over time? Is it a percentage or just in the realm?
I think it's, I think it's reasonable. Um, I, you know, once again, and this is where it gets hard, um, they, they ask you to submit a 10-year plan, and something could break tomorrow that could completely change this. Um, and so, uh, you know, this, this might be, um, a, a little bit on the low side, but I think there are enough things that we know that we have to address, at least in the next five years, that I think that we will, um, i- if we can maintain this level, I think that's reasonable. Um, I, I think we would struggle to probably plan to, uh, be able to do better than this.
Okay. Thanks.
For lack of a better way of putting it. So I don't know if anyone has any additional questions? Are there any other questions? All right, seeing none. Uh, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to forego the reading and adopt the resolution approving intermediate school district 917's long-term facility maintenance program budget, and authorizing the inclusion of a proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue, and approving the ISD 192 long-term facility maintenance plan as presented.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second. By Dentinger? I had to think about it for a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance plan is passed. Uh, our next item is the approval of fees, uh, facility fee schedule. Uh, again, Dan Miller?
All right, thank you, Chair Christensen, members of the board, members of the community. Um, we kinda discussed this a little bit more in length, uh, at the last board meeting, so don't want to, uh, kinda rehash everything. Um, the entire fee schedule is present in the document, but specifically wanna focus on the area, uh, specifically that we are looking to change, and that would be, um, on the, kinda the third page there, uh, towards the end, as it pertains specifically, uh, to lining and field dragging of those outside, um, venues that we maintain here in the district. Uh, so kinda starting, uh, there where it talks about unify and lacrosse, uh, field lining, and then going down to the end where it's, uh, softball field, uh, chalking. Uh, so those, uh, values that are there in the chart represent, uh, material and labor costs, um, that it takes us, uh, to provide those services for our outside vendors that utilize our spaces. This would be on a, in a per, um, kinda service, so if, if we end up needing to, uh, line a, a football field, um, once a week, uh, then outside those entities that utilize that particular space would be billed back, uh, for that fee, um, as it's lined. If there's any additional questions or comments with that, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
First of all.
Yeah, quick, on the event, or the, uh, I can't remember, permit, permit fee event, per event, you can bundle that, correct?
Yes, that is tru- that is, we do currently do that, correct.
Perfect.
Yep. Okay. Um, at the work session, I just, this is just a technical thing, I guess, but. Yep. At the work session, there was some discussion about making sure there was added in here some note that, you know, if inflationary and materials costs increases, that this is going to, subject to some change, uh, even before having to come back to the board for approval. Okay. I don't, I don't see that, but I, I don't know if I'm looking at the right place. Yeah, I, um, yeah, we can certainly add a note to the final published document that goes on the website and with the facilities office. Okay, I just wanna make, we've, we've talked about this, I know at length at the work session, and, I mean, these, these prices are, it's always funny, when I used to, I used to have to rent the facilities for, uh, scouting organizations, and I was always kinda shocked at how cheap it was. Um, so, I mean, it really is, it, it's a good value and a great service that we provide back to the community, um, so I do wanna make sure, so I would appreciate the, make sure, I think it's added before. Yep. Documents become public, um, to make sure that the, and obviously the financial interests of the district are, are taken care of.
Yeah, one, just one, Kai, just think, let the groups know that the board requested that, because I, I know the groups understand that, and that's kinda outside of how we've done that in the past, because that's a very sensitive topic.
Yep.
I would say.
Okay. Yep, can certainly do that. Okay.
Okay. If there are no other questions, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the changes to the facilities fee schedule effective July first, 2022 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Carrero. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion is passed. Our next item is the 2022-2023 budget. Jane.
Chair Christensen, board member Superintendent Berg, thanks for having me back here tonight to wrap up our 2223 budget. The document is attached. I'm just going to talk briefly about the change that happened between prelim and final, and there'll be more to come because of our wonderful federal government. It actually has to do with food service. I discussed last time when I was here that the fund balance was going to decrease about by a hundred thousand dollars because there was some equipment that we needed to purchase. So you'll see that change in that fund balance page. But two, Congress on Friday decided to pass, which is all good, it's the timing, right? The whole timing of it and trying to figure out all the logistics. Some waivers for the 2223 school year, not only for the school year, but for the summer. They increased some reimbursement rates, which is wonderful, but logistically, we'll have to see how this is all going to roll out. Currently, I haven't received any communication from MDE because technically speaking, we're supposed to be serving free meals this summer, but there's a whole logistics of getting food in, getting staff in, all of that stuff. So hopefully sooner rather than later, MDE will be getting back to us on how that all is supposed to work. But until then, we can't do a whole lot. Besides, we're gathering some information on meals that we served last summer, what was our supply, you know, how much staffing do we need, what is the best location, all of that stuff. But unfortunately, I don't have much more than that for food service at this time. The rest of the budget stayed the same from our preliminary discussions, so if anyone has any questions, I'll take them at this time.
When was when was the letter going to go out to the families about the lunches? I can't remember. Was that August?
No, so USDA is going to be releasing their information July first. We and we can't send any information out prior to then anyways. Every year, the earliest you can send it out is July first. And so it'll be interesting to see what happens with this new bill that was passed on Friday, how that affects this process.
Can you what are the waivers that you mentioned? I mean, what does that mean?
We don't have all of the information, so some of it I've been reading, it's kind of muddy that they're going to extend any any issues that we're having with supply chain, we may be able to get a waiver in that. So for example, if we can't get two percent milk, we can use a one percent milk. So there's a whole matrix that we need to fit into when we're planning out meals, and if we can't fit within our nice little box for simple terms, they're going to allow us to step outside of that. A lot last year, we had some issues with getting some fruit, some vegetables. Milk was an issue because we couldn't get cartons for the milk. So a whole host of things. Bigger concern besides those sorts of waivers is really what's going to happen with our educational benefits. I read a little bit that reduced is still going to have to pay reduced.
Yeah.
So I'm waiting for final communication that they're still going to have to fill out applications, but they're going to get free meals this summer. So really need to wait to see what MDE tells us, what the final guidance says.
Yeah, so back to Steve's original question, typically that letter goes out at the beginning of August, right around there. That's we have to send that out. We had talked about kind of doing some email blasts through the buildings. We're going to hold off on any of the email blasts now until we see exactly what that is, so we don't give people bad information, because that was the thing that caught us was, you know, the in the past, the waiver was the waiver. Anybody could come and get a meal and they were all good, and now looks like the Senate had put something in about if you're just a reduced, you may still have to pay for that. So there's some stuff that we have to dig through, so.
So we're okay for the summer, though?
Yeah.
Of reduced trade.
Yes. Well, I mean, you're okay from the standpoint of that we can provide free meals.
Yeah.
Yep. But we we have to get it up and running and figure out what it is and.
And then we logistically have to figure out, when did that take effect?
Yeah.
Wow.
So okay is is it's.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
We're not out of compliance, but we're not necessarily engaged. Yeah, okay, I got it. And that's partially the state's dragging its feet.
Well, it's the federal government.
Okay.
But I mean, I love to point my finger at the state, but actually, this one is the feds.
Okay.
So the time so do we actually have a timeline? I mean, I know with their mercy of actually what's going to transpire, but is that going to be?
Yes.
Kind of moving target, would you say, then?
Well, I would say at the earliest, we could get meals out, and then we have the holiday coming. It's going to be two and a half weeks for sure before we can get we can't we have to get supplies in.
Right.
That's I mean, that we have to get product in, and can we get it in, you know, so.
But in terms of like communication for the school year, we we should be closer to that timeline of being able to send stuff out at the beginning of August to families in terms of who needs to do what, who needs to fill what out. So there's kind of two, there's.
Yep.
What Jane's talking about, trying to get things up and running for the summer, and then there's the communication part of the next school year of what does it mean when they say that they're going to waive school meals and who who's actually going to have to pay or may not have to pay and stuff, so.
And how fast can the state make get the communication and information out?
Right, I guess that's where I was going, that risk of them not providing that till when school starts.
Mm-hmm.
As a.
Yeah, it's a risk.
Potentially, yes, or, okay, okay.
I do know it was on the radar because I was communicating with them prior to Congress passing it, just saying, hey, what do you guys know? And they're like, well, we won't know anymore until they pass it type. So I know they were waiting for it as well.
Because that's a significant change, and what a financial burden now possibly, depending on which which way you look at it. Wow, okay.
Jane, do we have a sense of utilization? I know you said you were looking at the data around utilization of summer meals last year. I'm just wondering and concerned about access for families who need it that will be perhaps halfway through the summer before we have the ability to do it. Has anyone have we have we heard from families who are looking for that, or do we have a mechanism for connecting them to like 360 or the food shelf or?
Yeah, I haven't received anything personally myself. We did quite a bit of communication before school was out to let them know that that wasn't an option because it was the way the law was currently was written was that the last day of school was the last day that we could serve the free meals. So now it's about reconnecting all of those dots in that communication and reaching out to those families, plus trying to get all the product and everything in, which is it's just truly unfortunate.
Got it.
And we went into the summer knowing, I mean, thinking that we weren't going to have free meals, so just talked to Chris and Lisa, and they haven't heard a lot from their principals, but again, trying to be proactive. So Kate Adams, our district social worker, kind of had that on her radar and was starting to put some things in place for families because we, you know, this is quote unquote another bonus that we're going to be able to provide them, so they did have a plan in place. Now, to what extent that is, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
But we can't really initiate it. All we can do is send that, and they have to complete the form. Is there anything that we can proactively do?
So you're talking about the educator educational benefits. They I mean, we can we can have them available in buildings when people come through. We can help people fill them out, but the family has to fill it out.
Probably sign it and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And it's not an online form, I'm assuming? Oh, it is an online form.
We have it in multiple different varieties for them to fill out. It's even in Spanish. There's a lot, and we can download the application from the state in multiple languages, so.
Wow. So we could kind of get creative. I guess what I'm looking for, if we can make it simple for families, if we have like a night where we have the school district one building with laptops or building like FES, people ready to come in and fill out the form or help families fill out the forms, we could do that even.
Yeah, we typically haven't, you know, seen that because the right, a lot of it is more of connecting to families to know that it's an option for them because they get it in the mail, and we get all that mail and stuff like that and just kind of goes out. I think our bigger concern this year, coming out of it, if we do need families, and this goes to what we talked about before, if we do indeed need families to fill that out, is that's been off of people's radars for two years. So people haven't even thought about it. So I think that was why really, you know, our initial thought was to push it out through buildings first because they have the closest connection with people and start that. We were our plan was to start that pretty close to after July first and the fourth of July, and now we'll get away a little bit, followed up back by the mailing that goes out, and then beginning to follow up through buildings to families that they know and things like that, so.
Is there a certain timeframe then, once that say that comes out August first, they have a month, or can they do it whenever through the year?
You can do it anytime, and but the problem, and Jane talked about this before, I shouldn't say the problem, the issue is, is up until those benefits take effect, any meals that are charged to an account, they're the responsible. Now, again, we have different things in buildings that can that have supported that stuff before, but to your point, trying to be proactive and get that stuff back before school starts because then you don't have to worry about it. But those, you know, families can do that in the middle of the school year, any point in time and stuff like that. It just as long as it takes them to process it, right, Jane?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
All right. There was a this is the the budget had lots of different facets, and I know you've spent a lot of time on the the food service side of that. I don't know if there's any other questions. I know I think what happened, or last last I remember, is because there was no action at the state, we don't have we have lots of other issues that we'd like to resolve but can't. So, yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure where else to take that, but are there any other questions from members of the board? I don't have any. I would go off on a rant if I tried. Okay, with that being the case, can I get a motion on passing the 2022-2023 budget as presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt the recommended increase to child nutrition meals. Is that the right one?
No, I think we're on C. We spent a lot of time on we spent a lot of time on the approval of nutritional meals, but we were on the adoption of the 2022-2023 budget. Item C.
I don't have that on this one. I have the.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the recommended fiscal year 2022-2023 budget as presented.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Doyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our next item is the approval of the child nutritional meal prices.
Again.
And still Jane.
Again, Chair Christensen, board member Superintendent Berg, members of the community, I am here tonight also to ask for a minimal increase on our lunch prices. As you can see up on the board, we are looking for a five cent increase across the board for our students, and our adult meals would take a fifteen cent increase for breakfast and a twenty-five cent increase from lunch, and you can see that is from prices from the nineteen-twenty school year.
Nineteen-twenty?
Mm-hmm.
That was a long time ago.
Exactly. That's what I that's what I'm saying, so you know.
Mm-hmm. Jane, can you clarify the premium for grades nine through twelve?
Yeah, so the at the high school, there are certain meals that are considered premium, and in order for those that we discharge and upcharge for them, for students to select.
Jane, I had a question, just as a member of the community from some of my neighbors about they were getting surprises when they were, you know, before COVID, you know, their son would say, oh, I grabbed something, or their daughter would say, I grabbed something. Do you know when a full meal is charged again if a student goes back up for something?
Yeah, I mean, parents can look right online at their account when they get charged for stuff. If they're ever going up for a second meal, that is charged at the full price à la carte because you can only get reimbursement on one full complete meal. So anything so let's say I get a complete meal, right? I have all of my components, and then I go back and I want another because I'm super hungry. I have football, I got soccer, I have track, I have volleyball. So I go up for another meal, you get charged an à la carte price because there's no federal or state reimbursement on that.
Okay, even if they go up and just get one more side?
If they get a side, it's an à la carte charge.
Okay.
Yep, the only way that you'll see these prices is when you get a complete meal, and you have to meet all of the components in order for that.
Awesome, thank you.
Yep.
And does that extend to to the younger grades that they're offered? Do you want beans or fruit? If they say no, they're still charged, or are those kids?
No, you have to have three of the five.
Okay.
So as long as we see it more at the high school, right? The high schoolers are like, no, I just want my slice of pizza.
Yeah.
Well, okay, well, that's, you know, X compared to Y.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion?
I motion to adopt the recommended increase to child nutrition meals for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dettinger, second by Simmons. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is passed. Our next item is resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy.
Thank you, Chair Christensen, members of the community and members of the board. At well, I shouldn't say as you may know, but you may know that our school board elections are held in even years, so every two years. So we're coming up on 2022. At that time, Board Member Carrero, Board Member Coletta, and Board Member newly appointed Board Member.
Who just got here.
I know. It's going to be a short ride. Board Member Dettinger's seats are going to be up. And so one of the things that we the board needs to do is so that we can meet timelines as a district to make sure that we put notices out so people know that they can come in and, you know, file an affidavit for candidacy to see we're going to ask the board tonight to put a resolution to identify those dates. And we would ask that those dates be from Tuesday, August 2nd of 2022, and then it would close on August 16th of 2022. And so a candidate can come in and file that affidavit in the district offices, which are located in Farmington High School. There is a $2 filing fee, and that must be done in that timeframe, August 2nd to August 16th, and it closes at 5 o'clock on the 16th. So this is a procedural thing that allows us to set that timeframe for candidates to come in and complete that affidavit.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Just a plug that Lori makes it so easy for people who are interested in running. She gives you a whole packet of information that you need. So if you're thinking about it, stop in, and she's got all kinds of good stuff.
I think she gives out candy bonuses for anybody that pays in $2 bills, so.
I didn't know that. All right, that's great. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Can I get a can I get a motion here?
Make a motion to forego the reading and adopt the resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy for the November 2022 general election.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Doyle. All in favor, say, oh, sorry, I want to do a roll call vote here.
Carrero?
Yes.
Dettinger?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Coletta?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes. The motion passes. Thank you. Our next item is approval of the 2023-2024 school calendar. Superintendent Berg?
Thank you, Chair Christensen. As shared at the work session at our last meeting, it's a fairly typical school calendar for us. We just don't have a lot of things where we can move dates around. The nice thing is, is that Labor Day is fairly early, so we start right after Labor Day. A couple other highlights, the elementary school learners would be out on May 31st, so they'll be out in May, which is a Friday, so we won't have that hangover that we had this year. The secondary students would be out June 4th, which is Tuesday of the following week, which works out fairly well, especially at the high school with some of their finals. Graduation is a little bit different. It is that previous week, so we are planning on graduation on May 31st. So those seniors would be out a little bit early compared to their other other students in the high school. Spring break is in a fairly typical spot, right at the end of March, and we kind of bounce between the end of March, beginning of April, and then we have a little over a week for winter break. I think we go Friday full week, and then we have the Monday after the first off. So like I said, a fairly typical calendar. We don't have a lot of wiggle room to do things. So I'll take any questions.
All right, seeing none. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the 2023-2024 school calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion by Dettinger, second committed by Coletta. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have a calendar for two years now. That's awesome. Final item is establishing of school board meeting dates for the coming year. So we talked about this at the work session. We yeah, we talked about a number of different options, including moving the Mondays around a little bit. We there are some conflicts, or there have been some conflicts, and I think we talked about maybe mitigating some of that by keeping we can't really move it. It's too difficult right now to move our planned dates from the second and fourth Mondays, so I think we agreed to keep that, but to mitigate some of the overlap with other competing events that sometimes draw board members and members of the community into them by starting earlier. I think we used to start at 6:30, then we moved it to six, and now the proposal is to move it to 5:30, which would bring public comment to 5:20 PM, which I think probably balances a lot of interests pretty nicely. I don't know if there's any other discussion on this topic or whether we can just move to a motion to adopt the the calendar that's attached here and starting our and this would And starting our, and, and this would begin next, next month. So July 11th, that meeting would start at 5:30 PM. Okay, so can I get a motion to set the school board meetings for the 2022, 2023 school year on the second and fourth Monday of each month, uh, except July, December, March and May, which would have only one meeting each as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Carrero, second by Coletta. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's passed. Um, our next item is really a series of policy actions. We reviewed all of these at the work session as well. Um, who will lead?
There's only one that I need to even talk about.
Okay.
The, uh, policy 213, we had just mentioned at our work session. Hannah had brought up that, um, we wanted to change some of the verbiage a little bit and just make it more succinct to, to, um, state what each committee will be doing versus, um, anything super detailed. So hopefully everyone had a chance to look at those changes. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Um, otherwise, none of the, uh, none of the other policies have changed since the last reading.
I think we're all good. So can I get a motion, uh, to adopt policy 203.5, school board meeting agenda? Policy 206, public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons? Policy 207, public hearings? Policy 213, school board committees? And policy 1020, addressing school board member violations?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Coletta, second by Doyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes as well. So, um, our last item is board remarks. So I will start with Kennedy.
Um, I'd just like to welcome our new board member, Ms. Dentinger. Um, welcome.
Thank you.
I started pretty recently too, so it's, it's a fun ride. Yeah, I'm sure you'll do great in the short time. And then I want to thank you all for coming, coming in and making a fun time. And then happy birthday, Chair.
Thanks.
That's all, yeah.
All right, thanks. Number Doyle?
Um, I'll just echo the same sentiments. Welcome to Sue. Uh, we appreciate you being here and stepping up. Um, thank you to the community for, um, getting out and supporting all the activities for due days. It's just awesome to see yet another way that the community supports, um, each other, I guess. Um, we always know that they support our schools. Um, hard to believe it's, summer's almost half over. It makes me really sad. Uh, but that's it.
All right. Member Simmons?
Well, welcome Sue. So excited to have you on, um, and be a part of the fun ride that I think this is. We've all been working hard and excited to have your fresh perspective and, um, ideas and thoughts as part of this work, this very important work, so welcome. Happy birthday Kyle. Um, thanks for spending it with us. Appreciate your commitment to attendance and, uh, keeping, keeping the board running here. Um, also want to call out, I attended the due days parade. It was great to see all of, um, as Jaclyn mentioned, our community and all, so many of our activities represented. It was really fun to have them back after a couple of years. Um, and want to give another shout out, uh, to the community ed team. So my kiddo is taking a, uh, part in one of the really unique things that they're offering this year called Tiger Adventures as part of those unique activities where they, um, really proactively reached out to families with kids who are eligible to say, hey, you, um, through the use of these funds, you have the opportunity to sign your kiddo up for things like he's doing a Zoo Odyssey camp where he gets to spend a day at the zoo behind the scenes. And, you know, they have art and STEM, all of these things for any, um, any kiddo's interest. And so he's really excited about that. Um, and so I just want to give that team, um, a shout out to. And, uh, also thanks to, um, fellow board members and Steve for being willing to represent, uh, our, our work and our partnership with 917. Um, I, I think it's, uh, really valuable how despite, um, so many of the things that we, commitments that we have as board members and especially some really long meetings this year, to continue to have someone so willing to step up and you spend even more time working on that. I know that you, um, have, have just really incredible connections and for the rest of the board too. And, um, Steve made a really good point that I think we have an opportunity to bring back some of that work a little more directly and share, share with the board on a regular basis about the work that, um, that representative is doing in that committee. And so I'm happy to do that and, um, as part of that work, so. Thanks everyone.
I'm Carrero. Um, welcome Sue. You know, I've sat at many board meetings with you on the other side of the table and on the same side of the table. So look forward to working with you again on stuff. Um, a couple of things. Uh, my daughter was in town, so we went up to see the new tennis court stand. Fabulous, she was very impressed. My son wanted to know why he didn't have it when he was here. So I said to call you. Um, also when I was up there, the marching band was incredible. It was 90 degrees out, the marching bands out there, just in the road going down, working their butts off on that. And I saw a thing on Twitter that we had a choir band or choir group at the Twins game.
Mm-hmm.
I did not know, that's pretty cool.
Yep.
That was pretty cool. So kudos to them as well. And then Mitch Grange, Mitch is very special to me because I was able to, I known him as a little kid, so it's kind of neat to give, have him give back. And he went to the same college as my daughter, who played lacrosse, and then ended up at U of M. So it's kind of cool to see, you know, it's kind of weird because he's a big kid now. I remember he was a little kid and his teaching skills are phenomenal out there with the kids. Hopefully we can get him as an educator down here as well. Um, also Jason, just a quick question. The, do we get a banner for the, the Blazing Cats in the Farmington School? Do we know?
That's a good, that's a good question. I'll have to check with Keith.
And the only reason I ask is I know we've always been.
If we don't, we should.
Partners and I know that Burnsville always has the banners and it would be nice to get one.
Yep.
Within our school. Um, and again, dues, due days were great. That was fun going down there. It was nice to see a lot of different families down there, so a lot of new faces. So that is all I have.
Member Coletta?
I have to echo the sentiments of I'm excited to be working with you. Well, I'm excited to, um, uh, learn a lot of your knowledge. You've got a lot of experience in fundraising and, you know, booster clubs and something that, especially with boosters, I don't have. So, um, looking forward to getting better acquainted in that aspect of the school district. Um, a surprise that even Jason doesn't know, um, the robotics team presented a team picture to an executive at Thomson Reuters where I work. So excited. I don't want to tear up, I promised I wouldn't, but I'm so excited for the team. Um, she was so impressed and she's so impressed with the Go Baby Go project that they do that she is going to take it globally. And so they're doing a huge conference. I don't know why I'm tearing up for people at home. My son's on the team, but anyways, that's probably why I get a little more emotional. But, um, so yeah, they're going to be presenting for an hour and bring in a, a family that's been presented one. So, and it's going to be, um, broadcast to India and the Netherlands, all over. So it's going to be really neat. So I'm hoping, that's why I need to talk to you a little bit more, Sue, about, I'm looking at it as a fundraising opportunity to, you know, executives looking at it, we need to get some funds coming in so we can get one of those top notch robots built again and go back to Worlds. So that's what I'm excited about, so. Um, but just looking forward to a, a great summer. Um, thanks for everybody does at the board. Hannah, I'm really looking forward to working with you and Sue on the community engagement program. There's some really good things coming down the pike. So that will be exciting, so. And nice to see you Lori.
Member Dentinger?
Um, so I should probably make sure that we probably acknowledge one more time Melissa Saucer um, for the wonderful contribution she made for such a really long time. Um, and I know I've said to a couple of you, one of the things I consistently hear from all of you is the very best part of the job is to hand out those diplomas. So, um, graciously, I had an opportunity to do that. Haven't done a lick of work, uh, and got to do the best part. So, um, lots of hard work to go from here. And, and I think, um, for me, uh, I tell my kids all the time, uh, and hopefully we tell our graduating seniors to just leave it a little bit better in the way you found it. And so I'm going to do my best not to mess anything up and contribute appropriately, so. But thank you.
Thanks. Uh, so that leaves me. Um, yeah, same. Um, Sue, I'm excited to have you here and, and it was, uh, a really speedy process that we moved through, a little bit of a whiplash through April and May. You do have big shoes to fill. Um, Melissa Saucer was a, kind of a pillar of the community and I think a lot of people miss her even through due days and some of the other activities, so. Um, but she is doing well. I've, I've messaged with her occasionally and she's, she's doing well. Her family's, uh, getting well settled in now in Utah. Um, but yeah, um, yeah, you said you haven't done a lick of work yet. Don't worry, you will. Um, and in fact, looking through the agenda, it's interesting. I think from the outside perspective, it always feels like a lot of this is just very routine and, and whatnot. Part of that's the legacy of how well the board's actually just been managed all over these years. Part of it's because of all the work that takes place between meetings amongst other board members, members of the administration and, and whatnot. Um, so you will, you will be diving in, uh, I know headfirst into, you know, some, some pretty good discussions here. Um, and I do think about that too. I mean, we, we just, I don't know if we really, and we all reflected on the end of the last year, but it really never, I, I guess, this is setting the stage for 2022, 2023. A lot of the, the discussions we had tonight and it's, uh, it's important work.